Good morning, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of October 8th, 2015, to order. Let's make sure that all of the commissioners and staff are here with us this morning. And at this point, I'd like for you to join me with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. Next up is our public comment period. This would be your opportunity to address the Planning Commission on a land use issue that is not on our agenda today. We'll be moving on to the consent agenda, which we don't have. I guess the minutes aren't ready. Is that okay? That's easy. So, next is, look at how we're whipping through this agenda.
Almost done.
We're almost done, we're halfway down the page.
You're about to get to the sticky part.
Yeah, I guess so. Our next up is a public hearing, which is 2015-0290, Appeal by Ford Construction and CB Asphalt. Peter, would you like to give us an update?
Yes, thank you. Well, we're still waiting on the additional information that the Environmental Management Agency asked from CB Asphalt and Ford Construction. We got a letter yesterday indicating that they had just received that information from their air quality consultant. They're reviewing it and will be submitting it to us next week sometime. Their representative has asked that it be continued to the 22nd. I do not believe that gives Jason enough time to review the new information, to make the determination based on your prior direction. And so, we recommend that we continue it to some date beyond that regularly scheduled meeting of the 22nd. If we get it next week, we have to have a report to you by Thursday. We're not sure what day we're going to get it. Monday's a holiday. It just won't have enough time for Jason and his team to review the information, to make a determination whether or not there is changes in his finding based on that new information. So, the options would be to continue it to the regularly scheduled meeting, next meeting, which would be November 12th. Unfortunately, I will not be here for that meeting. I'll be out of town. So, we could, we do have every Thursday reserved for general plan hearings, and if you wanted to schedule it for a date following the 22nd, the 29th is available, the 5th is available. I think the 29th may be pushing it for Jason and his crew. He's been working very long hours on the fire recovery, and I think the 5th would probably be a better date for a date certain continuance. The other option is to continue it off calendar, to wait for Jason to complete his review, and then we would have to renotice it and schedule, you know, a hearing when it's, when we are ready for that. So, those are the options that we have. I would say the 29th, the 5th, or off calendar.
You mentioned that they wouldn't have enough time for, with the submission of their new information or additional information.
Right.
That it wouldn't give Jason enough time to determine whether it would change his findings. What findings?
Well, the findings whether or not the proposed asphalt plant would have a potential significant effect on the environment and trigger the conditional.
I know what findings he's supposed to come up with eventually, but changing his findings indicates he's got some already.
Well, the initial finding that he made, based on the prior determination from back in, what, July or August it was made. So, does the new information plus the direction that you gave him to consider other laws and how the information that we would get are affected by those laws, would that change the determination that was previously made?
Okay. Now, with the mailing that we got yesterday, where does the issue of the ATC stand?
The mailing that we received yesterday?
Yes, the, from your office, the Kinderman letter attached to the, the letter from Jason, the Kinderman letter addressing the Jason.
Okay, the, yes. Well, this was, they had asked that we hold off on beginning the SEQA process for the ATC until this determination is made, on whether or not they will be the lead agency because the authority to construct.
Right.
Air quality permit was determined to be a project under SEQA, or Plan Department becomes the lead agency because a conditional use permit will be required. And the applicant has requested that we stop, that we hold off on beginning the SEQA process until that determination is made, and we decide who's going to be the lead agency.
And there was another issue in there. There was the issue of, of, I'm not going to get this right, because I don't have it in front of me. It was a legal issue on.
Well, it has to do with the commencing of preparation of SEQA documents. I have the letter in front of me here, if you want, if you want to refer to it to.
Yeah. I'll get it in a second here. The waiver issue. The waiver issue.
That has to do with the timeframes. We're required to begin the preparation of an environmental document as soon as we've determined that one is required, and we don't want to be put in a position of, you know, this is being delayed because of their request, and then they turn around and say, "Oh, county, you screwed up because you didn't start the SEQA process." That was the purpose of the letter from Jason, so that they recognize that this delay of beginning SEQA is at their request, not ours.
Well, okay.
Can I ask a question? What correspondence were you all, I don't think, is anyone else seeing?
I have it, I did not see it.
Yeah, so I don't.
And.
An email from your office, from, I can't be the only one who got this email.
Evidently, you are the only one.
You're it.
Yeah.
Then it moved through the process to my email faster than it moved for the other paper, because it came in yesterday.
Is this out there on the stand for the public?
I don't know what it's talking about. I wasn't interested.
Hey, I didn't send it to myself.
I'm not sure how you got, I just opened it up this morning, so I'm not sure.
So, I mean, I guess should we be chatting about this? I mean, we're, since we haven't been privy to it.
Yeah. This is the issue on the agenda. It has to do with the continuance as appropriate. If I could maybe explain, there was communication sent from the Environmental Management Agency to the applicant, sort of identifying that they've requested to delay the process, and it's, you know, their, their request. They responded with a letter saying, "Yes, we agree with that, and we'll be getting information to you, so then we can begin the process." Essentially, that's it. Julie has been in communication with Diane Kinderman, their attorney and representative, and I think Julie wanted to clarify the issue here.
Yeah, I spoke with Ms. Kinderman yesterday, and basically, a letter had come in requesting to delay the process, but the request had a little more to it. The request was also, "We want the county to stop SEQA altogether until we four decide we're ready, and because SEQA is a county responsibility," that appeared to be asking for more than we could really give. We cannot completely delegate when we start SEQA to the applicant, and so, there was a response letter, and there was also the concern that the county generally has a 30-day period, that they're supposed to commence SEQA. We wanted to make sure that there was some written statement, that if we're going to delay the process, that the applicant is essentially agreeing that, to the delay, because it would be a delay to them.
Yeah, that's a different way of putting it than the way Jason put it.
But, and I assisted Jason in responding, and ultimately, had a conversation with Ms. Kinderman yesterday, and at the end of the day, I think there was just a lot of protecting of clients going on, but at the end of the day, they're happy to have a continuance, we're okay with having a continuance.
And there's been no waiver of rights under 1506.
Well, we're not at a point where that's, if Ford were to come forward and argue, "Why didn't you do this in 30 days?", I would probably recommend that we say, "Well, you requested it," but that's not, that's not something that, at the end of the day, it's really just, we all agree to a continuance, and we wanted to clarify that the request was coming from the applicant, so we're not causing any unnecessary delay. The issue of waiver is not ripe right now, because there's nobody arguing that we delay, that the county delayed SEQA.
Okay. I still don't understand how, I'm so privileged that I got the emails and nobody else did.
Nor do I.
Nor do I.
It's lucky, I guess.
Who sent it to you?
I don't know. I mean, I just, it was an attachment to, I thought it was from Annette or somebody. Package, like, you know, attachments. I'll go back and look if I haven't, I mean, I save the documents, but I don't necessarily save the original email that they're attached to.
So, is there some discussion about a date?
Yes.
Peter suggested some. I think his was November 5th might be.
I'm not concerned about Ford or AB Asphalt and their time that they needed. They are the ones that caused the delay in not getting the information to environmental health, and I know that Jason's under a whole lot of pressure, so since they caused the delay, I'm going to recommend that when Jason's ready, he brings it forward to us with a date, because I don't think it's fair to tell Jason to rush through this when we're the ones that sent it back to him, telling him we wanted him to review it again. So, I'd like to do, date uncertain until Jason's ready, because I want him to do a thorough job.
I think the, my take on the delay is that CB Ford used an outside consultant to gather and analyze information, so it was a little bit more voluminous than just turning over raw data to Jason.
Right.
That's my take on it, just from that brief letter, so, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with, I'm not pointing the finger at Ford for causing a delay. If they've, if they've caused a delay because they're providing more information in a better form than they would otherwise provide to Jason, then that's fine. That's, it should be better.
If we don't continue it to a date certain, we have to renotice it?
Yes.
Is that correct? How big an issue is that?
It'll require that we go through and do the notice procedure, how many, Annette, do you remember how many addresses that we mailed it out to?
Any costly?
There's additional costs associated with the mailing and noticing requirements. We've continued to a date certain, the people that were interested are here, they will certainly get the word out, I'm sure about that, and we'll certainly post it on our website that this is the date that it's continued to, so.
So, if we continued it to the 4th, let's say, for example?
The 5th.
The 5th, and Jason still wasn't ready, or something, we could.
Then we would.
Continue further, right?
Need to continue it again if.
If he needed more time.
Okay.
So, is there a, is there any discussion? Is that good?
How are any vacation plans?
Is there a motion then?
Well, I think you need to open up the public comment.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot about you guys. So, would anyone in the audience like to address the issue about the continuance for CB Asphalt, Ford Construction, until November 5th?
Joe Kelly, yeah, I have, I don't mind you doing it, but I have a little bit of a heartburn over the issue of, one commissioner gets it, the rest of you don't, we, the people, don't receive it, and then you folks start talking about it. That's taking it out of the context of the Brown Act. Thank you. That is just on this issue, right, that we're talking about now, or public comment in general?
Just on this issue?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning, Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. It seems like the county is delaying the contractor firm doing his work, and we're talking about, well, maybe this is caused by the contractor. Maybe the contractor's not providing information that we want to have. Maybe the contractor's providing more information than we want to have. Maybe we don't have, due to other problems that are going on in the county, like the fire, maybe we don't have the ability to review whatever he submits in a timely manner. But bottom line is, we can blame the contractor, I suppose, but bottom line is that they can't do their work because of the county, and I don't know how you can escape that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Enderline, I am fully affected by this, and yes, you can have your continuation, and I'm not blaming you guys for your job or, or lack of doing it, but I have information. This is information on asphalt. This comes from a non-biased source. This is how the government defines asphalt. I would like to give this to you today, and also, what you guys are lagging on and not doing in regards to CB Ford Asphalt is not enforcing the law, and that law is not SEQA that you are not enforcing. The law you are not enforcing is the 1993 Environmental Permit Reform Act, and if I could, I would like to have a minute, because C says, "As the number of environmental laws and regulations have grown in California, so have the number of permits required of business." It says it right here in the law, and you guys are not enforcing the law, you are not keeping them to their permit. They have no permit, they have, and part of the Environmental Permit Reform Act is it sets up a process, and that process that was set up was SEQA, and the, and the applicant has not done SEQA, has not done any documentation, and their asphalt plant is in place. This is not a proposed project anymore. This is a project that is done. They have stored, staged, and assembled, and you are not enforcing your permit regulations. You are not enforcing the law. So, please, read the 1993 Environmental Permit Reform Act. This is the law you guys are here to enforce. Please do it.
Thank you. You had a question?
Annette needs him to sign in.
Pardon me?
Annette needs him to sign in.
Oh, a little late now. Oh, she, we needed Mr. Enderline to sign in. But we did get his name, Richard Enderline. Enderline, I think it was.
Yes, it's Richard Enderline.
Okay.
Janice Bassett from Valley Springs. And so, from what I heard, this matter's going to be continued, and you're trying to decide if you're going to have Jason come forward and say when he's ready, or you're going to set a date certain today, right? So, if there's a date that is going to be determined after today, so you guys will have to send notice to?
Who?
The same affected people that notice was sent to before. I think it's within 300 feet, or?
Yes, but if we're doing it to a date certain, we don't have.
Right, right.
But if we didn't, yeah, if we just continued to a date uncertain, then we would do the
whole noticing of the same people that were noticed previously.
Oh, people that have now filed petitions? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, people that I think live within 300 feet of the property, and then, I don't know, maybe there's a bigger list now, Annette, or?
People that have shown interest.
People who've shown interest, people who've signed, yeah.
Oh, okay, so people that have come to the podium and, or what? I'm not, just not clear, who's going to get the notice?
The people that have contacted us and asked us.
To notify them?
To notify them of any hearings, as well as the people that live within 300 feet of the property.
Okay. Because I'm just, you know, a little worried about these notices.
Right, and you don't, you want to make sure that you're, that you're noticed when it actually comes back. I totally understand.
That's right, because there was no notice prior, so.
Yes.
Anyone else?
My name is Lou Mayhew. I'm concerned that the Planning Commission has, in essence, created a kind of de facto, but without the provision of code, environmental review. It seems to me what may be happening here is this process is more complicated than you thought it would be, that you forced environmental health to undertake, and so, I think you may have acted perhaps inappropriately by forcing them to go back and look at all kinds of mitigation measures when it should have gone through a process appropriate for that, which would have been SEQA. Thank you.
All right, I think I'll close the public hearing. I don't know if, do you guys have a response to this whole?
I am not familiar with the 1993 Environmental Reform Act, and sir.
Not prepared to respond to that. I'm not sure exactly what section of the law he's referring to. I'd have to look at that and see.
Okay. And yet.
Doesn't it all just kind of funnel down to SEQA process, and then, isn't that what the, what he's, I thought that's what he was referring to. There's not some separate law that we're not complying with that all funnels down to a SEQA process, does it not?
I wasn't completely clear on what Mr. Enderline was referring to. I, the gist of, my understanding of what he was saying is that because the, he's alleging the asphalt plant's already been constructed, that instead of just looking at the approval process, we should also be looking at enforcement, if there was an enforcement issue, I don't believe that it would come to the Planning Commission first.
Okay, so he wasn't talking about a process that we're not following, he was talking about the fact that there's existing structure in place?
I, I believe that was his complaint.
Okay.
Okay, is there further discussion by the commission? Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Wooster.
I may have a little problem making it on the 5th. The 12th would be better, if we could do it.
Peter Mauer won't be here on the 12th.
Oh, that's the.
I think it's more important that he be here.
I won't be on the 12th either, so. You're saying you can't be here on the 12th either? No, I'll be gone that whole week.
So, the other date was October 29th?
Well, they had, they'd requested the 22nd. That's not possible. That doesn't give us enough turnaround time. The 29th is possible. I had tried to contact Jason before this hearing to find out if, if we receive the information next week, would be able to get something to you, you know, by the following week, in order to then, you know, schedule it for the 29th. We want to make sure that you and the public have a chance to review whatever his findings are prior to, you know, we sent it out a week before the hearing.
So, are they going to, for sure, have the information in?
They informed us that it would be available next week. I don't know when next week is. Whether that's Tuesday, or if that's Friday.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean, this is going to sound.
The other option would be to the 19th.
Can we give them a deadline of when they have to have that information in? Because it's kind of getting irritating.
I'm not sure what the effect of the deadline would be. I mean, yes, we can, but if they don't have the information, all they can do is ask to extend it. I mean, what we don't have, we can't say, "We won't accept your application late." I mean, they may have to reapply, but they, they haven't applied for anything, so there's no, nothing for us to sort of, to, there is the procedure in place, to say, "If you don't submit this date, then you're, you know, it's over." They would just, we have to accept it when it comes in, and then process it accordingly. The other option would be the 19th of November. And that certainly gives Jason enough time.
And you're, you don't have a problem with that? Why don't we go for a date certain? That way, everybody knows it, and, and under the circumstances, that seems reasonable to me.
19th of November.
Why is everybody looking at me? I mean, I'm just, I'm just a little bit irritated right now, because they've had a month to get this paperwork back to Jason to review. Obviously, the fire is playing a critical role in what our county can do in processing, but I would, I would like to see that paperwork come in, get processed, and Jason be able to get on his job and do it, and us be able to get this over with. But obviously, we've got special circumstances in our county now that are beyond our control or anybody's control, so the 19th is fine. I'll make the motion for the 19th.
Okay. It's been moved?
I'll second that.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the Planning Commission review of the land use element. This is a continued hearing of the general plan. Do you have any introductory comments, Peter?
Well, this is sort of getting to the heart of the, the general plan now. Just maybe for more of the public information, we're talking about the policies and text of the land use element. We're not talking about the maps yet today. That will come at some later date. I think we discussed last meeting that it would make sense to maybe do that at the end of the process, after we've gone through all of the policy language, so that the policies will help drive what the map's going to look like. But, you know, we received a lot of comments across the board, you know, make the rules more strict, make them less strict. I have gone through all of those comments, tried to incorporate those that I felt were as going in the direction that I'd received previously, both from you, as well as the, the board and prior hearings. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of interesting discussion and debate on how those changes were made. The draft shows the underline and strikeout that's been out there for, I think, a little over a week now. Hopefully, people had a chance to look at that. We have added more discussion on background and setting. Some of the discussion is going to need to change once we settle on a final draft, and it might even change at the very last, you know, after we do the EIR, and mitigation measures may be applied, and the board may modify the, the plan even further. So, depending on what the ultimate land use map looks like, it's going to affect the numbers that are in the discussion. But this was sort of based on the most recent draft, the information that's there. It'll, it'll evolve over time, but it gives the, the picture of where we're at today with the draft plan, just so everyone is aware that those numbers are evolving. We did move the discussion of the, what's it called?
Disadvantaged.
Disadvantaged Legacy Communities, thank you, to, out of the land use element. It'll be included in the Public Facilities and Services elements, and it's really associated with providing services to those communities. And because we will be including community plans, all of those policies related to, you know, community plans have been removed from the, the draft, and those will be addressed as we get into the community plans. With that, I think we can just sort of start reviewing it, and I guess we just want to take it sort of piece at a time, and maybe we talk about the changes, the background and setting discussion, and, you know, the, the initial text, and then we can get into the goals and policies, so we have sort of a back and forth that we've had before on other sections of the general plan, and take it out of sort of bite-sized sections, so that you and the public can have the interaction that I think has worked pretty well for us to come up with revisions to the draft. Do you have any questions of me?
So, as we work through this element, and you're saying the maps are not going to be concluded today?
Right.
So, I have really big concerns about those maps and how they look, and the thousand comments that came in, and if I look at the comments and then I look at these maps, there's, there's no way to tell whose property is receiving a zoning change. So, if we work through this element, you're recommending we just basically work on the language in the element?
Yes.
And then, if, when we get to a day about two months from now that we approve this, we are going to exclude the maps from this element?
No, no, no. We will be addressing changes to the map at a later date. We definitely will be addressing the map. We had lots of comments, lots of requests for different land uses.
Okay.
There are all kinds of options that we can go with as far as the map, but I think that's a, a separate, you know, that, that's going to be a long process where individuals are going to come up, and they, "We want this for, I want this for my property, here's the reasons why." You guys will debate it, whether you think it's a good idea or not, you know, I suspect that the map will change fairly significantly as we go through the process.
Do we have a list of people's emails, or how are we going to contact those people to let them know that we're now going to work on the zoning on their property, so that they can be noticed to come here? that we're now going to work on the zoning on their property so that they can be noticed to come here and speak?
We do have contact information for everyone, and we'll... We can send out a notice to them that we will begin discussion of the maps. And that's something I haven't really thought about too much as far as what's going to be the best procedure. You know, we're looking at a county-wide general plan, not individual general plan amendment requests. And so, I'm trying to balance that individual need with the whole general plan process. But ultimately, it's going to boil down to individuals requesting a certain land use designation for their property, and you and ultimately the board deciding that makes sense, given the direction we want to go with the general plan. Or it doesn't make sense. We're going to change it, modify that, or we're going to, you know, do something different. And we're getting new requests coming in. I met with, you know, some folks the other day that wanted to have something different for their property. I said, "Well, submit your request. It's not over yet."
But isn't... I mean, the consideration of the maps whenever that happens, there'll be sort of broad considerations, and then necessarily, these individual parcel considerations. How do you separate the two?
The maps are site-specific, so yes, it will be. I mean, we're looking, you know, we have to keep in mind the overall broad context of the land use maps, but where do you draw that line? Is it at that boundary or at that boundary? Those are decisions that will have to be made.
I guess for me, it becomes not general anymore the minute that we're individually taking people's parcels out and changing their zoning. So, I'm struggling with the individual parcel zoning changes in the general plan because it's no longer general at that point. It takes that away completely. We're affecting people's livelihoods and their investments when we start changing their zoning, and I just want to make sure those people are properly notified. I mean, I've gone through a lot of those comments and tried to specifically pull out district people in my area that had concerns, and I'm trying to look at their individual concerns. You know, some of them are taking advantage of the general plan process and saying, "Hey, change my zoning to this now," when it currently really didn't fit anywhere into the general plan as it existed. And then others are having their zone changed, and they absolutely defy it. I mean, so it's going to be an interesting process. But if we want to start on the element today...
Let's start somewhere.
Then reference two months because I see problems here.
Well, and I might add, just that this part without the maps is really setting the... It's how the map, the parcel by parcel, will be tested or measured. So, if we have a policy in here like, you know, promoting higher density growth in the community centers, and there's a proposal for a brand-new Newtown, somewhere in the county, you know, you go back to the work that we've done here. It's like, "Does that really fit? Is that... You know, we've set a policy that we're going to do X, Y, Z. Does that fit?" So, that's a way to gauge and to measure the request. Is it reasonable or not? Does it fit in the policy that we've gone through and established?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do actually, and I just want to check in with you guys, and Peter had mentioned it, is maybe just start with the introduction and the background and setting. Talking with the commission, and then let's, you know, if we zoom right through that, maybe we'll add another one. But I think that might take us a little time, and then open it up for public comment.
How far did you want to go?
Just the first two, just the introduction and then the background and setting, right before we get to the land uses.
Fine.
All right. Well, shall we? Any...
Yeah, I'll break the ice. The background and setting was added.
Yes.
Right? And isn't... Was this pretty much copy and paste from the background report? Or a condensation of a portion of that? My question kind of relates to why this element gets essentially background information where others don't. I mean, I know this is the most important element, no question about that, but isn't this information all contained within the background report that we went through a few weeks ago?
Yes, it is. This is a, you know, well, and remember that we were directed to come back with additional information in the background report. So, this is a condensation of some of that information that we will be putting back in the background or adding to the background report when it comes back to you. This isn't just cut and paste. I wrote most of this. Now, I got a lot of the information from a variety of sources, including, you know, background information, the baseline report, other reports that were provided to the board supervisors in, you know, previous years, data that's available today, census data, that kind of stuff. But this is new language that I wrote.
Okay, I just... I was kind of wondering why it was decided that this particular element needed its own background report?
Mainly, it was requests from a lot of members of the public that something be added. I think that most of the other... The other elements also have background and setting sections. I'm looking at the conservation open space. There's a background and setting section. The noise element, which we've already reviewed, also has a background and setting. So, that was one of the criticisms early on, was that, well, all the other elements have a background setting discussion, but there's nothing in land use.
Okay.
So, that's why it was added.
I like the economic development section. I have a question, kind of a problem with the land availability portion of it. In that, when I read that, it... I'm reading that it equates availability with growth. That it's talking... It's like an... There's an inventory of vacant parcels. And it suggests there's... There's been some discussion about this in the public, in the form of columns in the paper and whatnot. And I also remember essentially this same information being contained in a very lengthy report from Calvers Planning Coalition to your office. Like 160-page, very lengthy report. You know which one I'm talking about?
The comment letter that we received from them during the...
Yeah, that was about, what, eight, nine months ago? A long time ago.
Back in March.
Okay. And the equation was that there are X thousands of vacant parcels in the county. And therefore, no further possible divisions of existing parcels is necessary because these existing vacant ones haven't been built out yet. So, you've got this inventory. Why do you need to allow somebody else to divide their 40 acres?
That's assertions made by a number of commentators.
Okay, so that's... It's in that context that I'm reviewing this particular paragraph. And that's to me... That, to me, is what this paragraph... That's the point this paragraph seems to be advancing in my mind. Do you disagree?
To some extent, yes. You're correct. We have to look at, you know, can we accommodate the expected growth? And clearly, we can. That doesn't mean that we want to constrain the growth to only those lots that are existing. And I think that's the balancing point that we're trying to reach is, you know, if we're planning how we're going to grow, we are trying to direct development in certain areas where we have resources, where there's, you know, we have infrastructure, where there are critical habitats or other constraints that we think is maybe inappropriate for development to occur in those areas. And so, that the balancing act of general planning is, you know, property owners' desires, the market, and desirability of the land use patterns that ultimately come out of the growth that's proposed in the county. Unless you're living in a city or someplace that says, you know, "We don't want to grow anymore, and we're only going to limit it to this," then, you know, you would say, you know, "We expect 5,000 people want to move to the, you know, city of Pleasantville, and we like it just the way it is. We don't want to see it change, so we're going to not allow any new growth." We could adopt a policy like that. We could adopt a land use map that way. I don't think that's the direction that we intend to go. And so, we have an overabundance of available land, but a lot of that land is not buildable. It's remote, it's steep, it's... So, just doing a raw number crunching of how many vacant parcels there are, how many develop... How many lots could be developed out of that is not looking at the whole picture. And so, just, you know, the numbers that we receive say, "We don't need to develop any more land because there's plenty of land to be, you know, that's already... You can pull a building permit today, and it would satisfy the needs."
Which is my criticism of the paragraph because it doesn't get to that. It just gives you these raw numbers, and there's no perspective. It doesn't add the perspective that you just added. So, how meaningful are these numbers? Not very.
What I read came to my mind that that probably shouldn't be in here. It just leaves people astray when they look at that and say, "Well, we've got plenty of vacant lots already created, so we don't need any more."
Because it stops there. It says, "Look at all the vacant lots we got," and it just stops. And it doesn't say, "Here's how you have to look at that." So, unless you're going to go a lot farther and add the discussion that you just provided, I'm with Ted, just delete it. But inasmuch as this is the land use element, the land availability would seem to be an appropriate topic, but I think this stops well short of coverage of the topic. And how far you go with that in a condensed preamble, I don't know, but you could certainly go a lot farther than this.
Well, and I guess that's your choice at this point. We could delete it, or I could... You could direct me to come back with some additional language.
I'm not in favor of deleting it. I think it is... I think it would be important to add that, you know, you've got, you know, 13,000 vacant parcels, but what we don't know is there's been no sort of buildable analysis. Plus, we don't even know what land use designations they're in. We don't know how many of these parcels are residential, how many of these parcels are industrial. We don't know, right? We don't know.
We do. We have that data, yeah.
Okay. Well, that would be interesting to know, too.
And that will be in the background report when it comes back to you.
Okay.
I'm pulling that from, you know, previous reports.
And I think that... I think this is valuable information, but I think it does need to be... There does need to be a discussion about that, you know, it could be 10% of these 13,000 parcels are actually buildable, you know, because...
There's that issue, and so I think that's a perspective that would need to be added. Otherwise, you don't know what these numbers mean. It just looks like, oh, man, we've got, you know, we're full up. And it also doesn't address the flexibility issue. If somebody else's property might be that's... It suggests that the people who have parcels designated for, you know, whatever category, zoning category, are the only ones that can develop those properties where somebody else might have a much better possibility on a piece of land that right now is designated 40 acres. That's not a very good way to put it, but...
No, I understand what you're saying.
You understand? If we're going to have this in here, then I think this is probably the most important part of the whole preamble, and it ought to be put in perspective along the lines of how you verbalized it and beyond that, as Vaughn suggested.
I have a question, Peter. These 8,400 vacant parcels are five acres or less in size. Are those assessor parcels? Or how was that figure arrived in?
That would have been assessor's parcels, yes.
Okay, now, I can tell you that what happens when Caltrans comes through and redoes a highway like Highway 4, and then they rejigger their boundaries because they didn't get it quite right the first time, they create a whole bunch of little bitty parcels, like .03 of an acre along the highway, and they show up as separate assessor parcels. And so, when you're looking at 8,400 of these, there may be quite a few that are just on paper only because you couldn't put an outhouse on them. And so, that figure's really quite misleading, if that's how it's done. The other question I have is, it says, "This report also indicated that 33,698 additional residential units could be accommodated by the draft plan at that time." Now, was that done by looking at the map that had lots of land for which the designation was residential, five acres or less, and then saying, "Well, this has all been designated as future residential, so now it's available?" How was it done?
This was based on the draft number two map that was before the board in 2013. This is the most recent data that we had available. I wanted to get going on the discussion, so I didn't spend a lot of time re-analyzing and re-running those numbers. In the time that I was writing this, the GIS crew was so tied up with mapping for the fire staff, I just... I couldn't get, you know, the information. But I thought that that's why the caveat in this discussion was that these numbers are likely to change. But that map was fairly similar to the map that was in the draft number three that came out in December. And so, I thought these were representative numbers to give an idea of where we are at with, you know, parcel sizes and... So, this was based on the draft number two land use map.
So, that doesn't take any account of the availability, actually, because of steep slopes, creakets, and so forth that would limit?
Right.
Okay, so I would think that 33,698 number is quite misleading. It doesn't really tell you anything. And I think the 8,400 number is quite suspect as well for reasons that have been pointed out. So, if I were doing it, I would delete that 33,698. I would delete this sentence that talks about these units would provide housing for approximately 80,500 new residents. And I would include some discussion that makes it clear that the 8,400 vacant parcels of five acres or less is not an accurate representation for a number of reasons that have been expressed of what is actually buildable.
And adding to what Mr. Wooster has said, as you pointed out, Mr. Mauer, these 8,400 parcels, they vary in terms of viability as a lot, a buildable lot where a dwelling can be. And yet, that number is used to calculate 33,698 additional residents. It says, "That report also indicated that..." Okay, so that's where it's coming from, correct?
Well, it's not based on the 8,400. That was just sort of... At that point in time, I think there was some desire to understand, you know, where those existing smaller parcels are that people likely would be to purchase and build a house on today. Now, if you're less than five acres, you're not going to do a lot of subdivision of that land. If it's five acres or less, it's not like it's a 20-acre or 40-acre tract or several hundred acres that you're going to be doing a large subdivision project on.
Then this doesn't show that...
That line, as far as the, you know, 8,400 vacant parcels, is really probably immaterial. I thought it was sort of an interesting figure that, for whatever reason, that was provided to the board in a report in 2013. But the calculation of the 80,000 new residents was based on the entire county allocations of land use and acreage involved in that.
Well, the 80,000 is a direct result of the 33,000... 37... 33,700, correct? That's just a multiplier.
Yes, yes.
Right? You take...
2.4 times that, yeah.
Whatever the heck number they use. And so... And so, this paragraph shows 8,400 parcels, and then it goes into, it doesn't say directly, "That means 37, 33,700 additional units," which means 80,000 people, 80,000 residents, but the implication is exactly that.
Can I ask you, Peter, what is the intention here to actually provide more detail about land availability? You mentioned in the background report, I mean, that, that, is, is the intent then to look at this, these vacant parcels and, and categorize them by land use designation, and, so at least we have some idea on that score, as well as anything about location of where these parcels are? I mean, is that, are we going there? Because, and it's sort of twofold question. One, I think it would be good information, because it's going to inform these numbers. But also, if the county's intent in terms of economic development is to provide an adequate amount of land planned and zoned for business, how would we know what adequate is? I mean, if we don't know what we have now...
Right.
And if we're, you know, if we're saying we're going to plan and have an adequate inventory of land available, what is that number? I mean, and you'd have to know what you have now, and then you'd, you'd have to be able to see what you're planning for the future. So, I mean, I think you'd need it for that exercise, anyway. So I'm, I'm, what is the plan here as far as really finding out what is truly our land availability?
So I will be providing that with the, the background report when it comes. And I think that's going to be critical when we start addressing the maps. And that's why I felt it was okay to have sort of the interim information in this. I think that the suggestions that we clarify and provide the, the clarifying, clarifying information about what these numbers mean and how they are constrained, is, you know, at this point, it's just sort of raw numbers that are sort of not necessarily meaningless, but they, they don't tell the complete picture. And so, providing that information, I think, will help in explaining what this is, and then as we, you know, when we bring back the, the background report, that will then set the stage for looking at the maps and saying, okay, well, you know, gee, we've got a shortage of this type of land use, but an abundance of this kind of land use, maybe we need to identify other areas that are appropriate for whatever that land use is that we have a shortage of, along with all the other considerations of land use designations.
I don't know. I mean, I'd be inclined to wait to, you know, to evaluate this section on land availability until we had that. I mean, it's...
Just because they are a parcel certainly doesn't make them available, either.
Well...
I mean, I can, I can think of several parcels in the area that I know, if I live to be a million years old, there will not be a house on...
Well, and that's why you plan for excess.
Yeah.
Right.
Because there are such, you know, that's right.
There are a lot of parcels...
Not, it's not for sale, just because it's available.
That's right.
Right.
And it could be not available because of physical constraints to it. You can't get access to it. It's too steep, whatever, or it's just the landowner has no intention. I'm going to continue to use it for grazing as long as I and my heirs are running this land. So there's a variety of reasons why you don't have just a simple one-to-one ratio of, here's how many people are we expect to come, and here's how much we identify. But what is that ratio? Should it be five to one, 20 to one? Does it matter? Those are, those are the fundamental policy questions that you and the board will be asked through this process.
And it's tempered somewhat by the, the, you know, the answer there is partly is the population projection. So, you know, I mean, that gets you kind of an idea about what would be an adequate amount if you factored in 10,000 people over the next 20 years or whatever.
I think the, the important facts in, in this section are that we are expected to have about 9,000 people come to, to the county in the next 20 years. We're experiencing about a .2% or, you know, .2% growth rate, and that there are a lot of parcels available for development today. And that doesn't mean that there couldn't be or shouldn't be other lands made available also. And I think what we need to look at then is, how do the, the policies direct us to saying, if we want to have the type of development that requires public water and public sewer, then we should make sure that where those are available, those are the areas that are designated for future higher intensity, higher intensity development. What kind of land use pattern then do we want to have outside of those areas? Are they going to be larger acreage supporting agriculture and timber? Are they going to be smaller, you know, availability for ranchettes throughout the whole county? Those are the fundamental land use questions that are before us. And a lot of it is philosophy and policy, and that's where you guys play, play your role. What do you think is appropriate for this county? Given the context of what we can afford and what we want to see. So my suggestion at this point in time is we table the land availability discussion. I will work on that, and before it comes back, have more accurate information that has more detailed information as to what's out there today, what's, what the draft map shows, and to the degree possible, look at the constraints, and that might give us some better detail of, better understanding of what those numbers really mean.
You could approach it from a standpoint that you, you just mentioned, where you, you know, you're looking at more detail, but it could be that more detail just causes you more problems, because how reliable is the detail? Just like we're looking at these numbers right now. Or you could go with less detail, you could just go with kind of a big picture statement that maybe doesn't have a lot of impact, but it also is not inaccurate.
Well, as you get into more detail, it means a lot more work, and then you start looking at more site-specific issues.
I'm not trying to save you work, but I, I'm, you know...
Like I'm planning to do, so, yeah, please save me work.
Well, I don't think that you can break these numbers down into any sort of accuracy, because, I mean, you physically would have to go out to every one of these lots. Is there waterways running through it? There's no way there's going to be...
Can't, can't do that.
You can't. I think that we need to just put a statement in here, based on the fact that these numbers are estimates, and there are things that could affect building. I, I don't, I don't know that we need to break this down more, as much as we need to clarify that not all of these are buildable lots. It looks good on paper, but I don't think it's a reality, and we need to make a notation to that effect. Could you guys live with that?
Well, now you're speaking to the direction I think we ought to go with that, which is more of a general kind of a, a statement that doesn't try to get into specific data. I mean, data looks good on paper, but then this is kind of meaningless.
I think it'd be meaningless if there's no data in there. Then why even have the category at all?
If, if you're going to have data, then it's got to be accurate.
That's right.
Because it pretends to be accurate.
That's why the county has a GIS system. You can just run, just tell me how much, you know, rural residential I have today, how much, you know, commercial I have today. I mean, that's, that's, there are a lot of capabilities to do that, and at least, I mean, it's, it tells you about what the size is of your, the existing land uses in the county.
Or you can say something to the effect that, yes, there are 8,400 vacant parcels of five acres or less. However, it is known that many of them are unbuildable for various reasons, the exact numbers are not known, et cetera, et cetera. That's, those are accurate statements. And without going out there and counting them all, trying to find a system for counting them all, you can make a statement like that, which is accurate, and people can understand it, it provides perspective on this. So it, but it does, it does blow off this numbers of units, 33,700 and 80,000 residents. Those can't, those aren't flowing from anything reliable, and we don't even know where they're coming from. They're coming from this 2013 report, but we don't know what they're based on. If they're based upon the 8,400 lots, 8,400 parcels, we know that's not true.
Well, the other problem with that is, you don't know if the 8,400 parcels are all residential. I mean, it could be commercial, it could be industrial. I mean, it's like you're assuming every parcel is residential. That's why I think it's important to do, at least, look at your existing land use categories, your designations, and then, how many acres do you have in each of those? How many are vacant?
So the problem with your theory right now, Fawn, is that when we get done looking at the maps, the zoning is going to change in certain areas, so if he goes out and he does the research today on the current...
There's no research. It's, it's a GIS.
Okay, if he goes to the GIS right now, when we get done, those maps change.
They should, absolutely.
So do you think doing...
No, I'm not saying doing a map, but that, I, I think in order to, again, my, my example of, if we're going to say we want to provide an adequate supply of whatever, housing, of high-density housing, of commercial development, how, how do we know what adequate is, is if we don't know how much we have today?
I think you and, you and I aren't on the same page on this one. You, when you're looking at the land availability, you're going to make this statement as far as acreage that are available for residential uses right now.
Yes.
When we're done working on the maps, that number no longer will correspond with the map that we're going to approve.
That's, you're absolutely right.
So maybe if, if you're wanting detail, as much detail as you're talking about, then maybe this does need to wait until we finish the maps, and then we can go back to this and have a more accurate...
But you don't need to wait. You want to know what you have on the ground today, not what you're planning for in the future.
I think we do with this statement here.
Well, we only know how many vacant parcels. We don't know what parcels are commercial, we don't know what parcels are industrial, we don't know what parcels are. All those parcels have their own land use designation. We don't know that.
When you're looking at this GIS information, does that, does that just tell you what the current land use designations are?
Yes.
Okay, now, does that tell you anything about whether you can actually build on?
No, it does not.
So why is that helpful information?
Well, because it's helpful so that we, we would know, let's say, for example, we've got, if we have 13,000 vacant parcels today, there could be not one of those would be land designated for commercial, right? And so if we're, say, you know, if we're trying to direct business or industrial, and we say we're going to provide an adequate supply, how would we know what an adequate, adequate supply is? If we don't even know what we have today that's available? What are we going to plan for, for the future?
When, when you say, "We don't know what we have today," do you mean, like, what's actually on the ground in terms of commercial buildings?
No, what actually has a land use designation of commercial.
Okay, well, that's just, that's just a designation. That doesn't tell you anything about what's on the ground.
That's right. It doesn't tell you what's on the ground. So through this exercise, there's no way that you're going to be able to tell what the buildability, you know, the actual buildability, buildability. You know, if you actually...
It works, we...
Yeah. You know, if you can actually build on it. We don't know that, you know, and I'm not suggesting that we go through that, but at least we have an idea about what our existing land inventory is. Land availability, that's the category.
Peter, how hard would it be just to do a simple chart underneath it telling her what the zoning would be?
We could do that. And...
Well, it's the same thing if you looked at these 13,000 vacant parcels and just said, 5,000 are RR, 3,000 are commercial, 2,000 are, you know...
It, as a broad-brush approach, as a general overview of information, that's helpful. Does it get to the air, to the issue of how much of these are realistically available? I mean, there could be a, a site that is perfectly suited for commercial development, but it's just in the wrong location for market reasons, and will never get developed.
Right.
You know, there's any kind of number of reasons why something hasn't been developed today, it's been designated commercial for decades, and it's still vacant land. And it's probably going to stay vacant land for a long time, because the market's just not there. But there's, you know, I mean, it could go off in any kind of permutation as to why something is appropriate or not appropriate for a certain land use or not. And more often than not, it's simply landowners', you know, desires of what they want to do with their property. But we could provide some additional information that is, provides a better understanding of the land use pattern today, and what is proposed in the draft. And it will change, or it's likely to change as the maps are revised, and that's okay. It's an iterative process. We look at it, do we have enough? No, we need to change this. What, how does that affect us? That's what's going to happen through the EIR process as well, but, you know, we can do some of that upfront today.
So I have a question. Is, going back to the whole general plan, maps, and when we had the, you know, the town, you had the town halls and all, when we get to the map portion, will there be, because people have asked, you know, is there, will, will there be a, a map of existing land uses? That people go, well, this is, you know, my property now?
We can certainly provide that. So people compare, I've got this today...
Right.
And that, in a way, comparing apples and oranges is not, you know, a straight one-to-one comparison. That's something I explained at the meeting, the joint hearing back in June, that it's, you can't, you know, because of the way our '96 plan is organized and categorized as land uses, it's, it's different.
Right.
But it's, but they could certainly see, well, I have the potential for this, I don't know if the constraints don't allow that, but at least I had that potential. And how does that compare with the potential of what's proposed? That, that, we could certainly do that.
So if you had a map, you know, and you, if someone were like, and, you know, were looking to advocate for changing their land use designation to commercial, for example, and you looked at the map today, and you could see, oh, well, you know, it looks like we've got 3,000 acres of commercial already, you know, back then, at least we did. But if you looked at, you know, you can come tell on the map a little bit about the locations and stuff, and you can see that they're, you know, way out in the, off the grid. So, and then someone's got this parcel here that they think would be perfect. I mean, it's a way to also look at that and say, well, wow, yeah, that seems like that would be an appropriate location for that.
As, as we get into the maps, I think what we'll, what I intend to provide is a report that essentially lists every request for something different, as well as some generalized, I mean, you know, as, as we've gone back through and looked at some of these maps a little more closely, people, you know, contacted, and I looked at them, hmm, there's a, there's a whole, a larger issue here that maybe needs to be re-looked at. And so we'll be making some recommended changes sort of of our own, not just simply what landowners have requested. And we'll go through a fairly lengthy process of going sort of parcel by parcel of those people that would like to see something different, as well as those that we as staff recommend, you know, this is the next iteration of this map, it's going to continue to be refined as we go. I, I, we're getting a little bit bogged down in the mapping today...
Right, right.
...which is really not what's before us, it's really the, the text, which I hope sort of sets the stage for how the maps will, will be developed. But I understand the, you know, that, that just taking these numbers sort of out of context doesn't provide the information that helps, and we will have that for you when we get into the maps.
I just, you know, this is just background and setting, this isn't actually the portion of the land use element that we're going to work on, and it is the general plan, it's not the specific plan. So I, I would like to see this paragraph stay in there with some general comments, just clearing up that the uses of these lands may be located in places that are not compatible with a residential or commercial use, leaving this more general and hitting on the points that she's talking about specifically on the commercial use, the residential, agriculture, whatever it is down the road, into the element, we can place it further and more specific. This is just the background and setting report, this isn't our specific report, and I think we've spent an hour over on this one paragraph. So, I mean, I don't know what everybody else feels, but...
My, my sense is that this paragraph should just include some general information about availability of lands in different categories, whether we, we have, you know, adequate lands, depending on, depending on market forces, we have adequate lands for residential, commercial, and industrial, and public use, uses, okay? And, and we do, right? The land is there. We are not a, we are not a county that's built out.
Right.
Right? If we were a county that was built out, then... If we were a county that was built out, then a statement like that might be, "The county is pretty well built out on residential, but we've got a problem with needed commercial space to serve that population." That would be a statement for a different county.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And that would be what they would put in their land availability section. In our land availability section, we've got a different picture. We have adequate lands. It's just a matter of whether or not market forces are going to create something on these lands or not. Now, that's an example. I'm not trying to give you words to put it up on paper, but that's an example of a general statement in a general plan on this topic. And so, I would be in favor of something more like that as opposed, because once you get into the weeds, there's no end to it.
I think I agree with those comments. And I would say, if there's going to be any numbers in here, this 33,698 number, this 80,500 number, I would suggest not to be in there. I don't think that those numbers are accurate or helpful. And if we're going to have 8,400 vacant parcels or five acres or less in size, I think the qualifiers to the availability need to be in there. Some are too small, some are too steep.
And then you get into-
Just saying.
It's a tar baby. So, I agree with Mr. Wooster that if a number is subject to loads of criticism and explanation, then it's a number we don't need.
But I would like to see some sort of a chart with the breakdown on the numbers of zoning as Fawn was speaking of, because I do think that's important.
Okay, we can provide that?
All right, I'm good with that.
You go with that.
It's zoning, not availability. Availability is a different word.
Well, it's really just land use designation, yeah.
Right, right.
Wow, that went smoothly.
Anything else in this section before you open it for public?
Well, I think we're going to, we were going to do the whole distribution and economic development and then open it up to the public.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Okay. And I might add that I've got some just, you know, editorial things, but I would be happy to, I mean, just like consistency, like big C, little c, when we mention the county, apostrophe when we say 1970s, that I could just give you. I don't think we have to go through. If you guys are good with that?
Sure.
Okay.
So, just on that issue, whether it's a capital C for county or Fawn, when it's, the county as an entity, it's capitalized.
Right.
If it's the geographical region of the county, it's lowercase.
Okay.
That's the common protocol of when you capitalize, when you don't, something like that.
If the word "the" precedes it, it most likely gets capitalized.
Well, if you say there are-
You're referring to an entity like county government.
An entity like county government.
It's capitalized.
Oh, county government.
Yeah.
But you could say, you know, located in the county, which is the physical boundaries, it would not necessarily be capitalized.
Right.
But anyway, that's what I tried to use as a protocol there.
I think that works. So, distribution and land uses, land use patterns.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments? I just had a few editorial things.
Can I go back to the introduction?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. On the third paragraph, it says, "The main emphasis of the general plan land use element is to direct growth to areas in and around existing communities away from locations where natural characteristics and resource-based uses may limit development, wherein e.g. steep slopes, sensitive habitats, and resource production lands, and to areas that have or can readily be supplied with adequate public facilities and services." I don't see any definition in here about what's a steep slope or a sensitive habitat. And if natural characteristics are going to limit development, the general plan doesn't need to do it. A suggestion was made that we not try to describe the locations that we're going to direct development from, just describe those where we're going to direct development to, which would mean you would simply shorten this sentence up by taking that whole phrase "away from locations, et cetera," through resource production lands, get rid of it, and just discuss where you are going to try to direct development.
I'm not even sure that it's fair to say that the main emphasis of the general plan is to do as the sentence describes. Is that really the main emphasis of the whole general plan? Of this element, I mean?
I think it's a pretty big emphasis.
I know it's in there, but-
Yeah.
It's a fairly significant emphasis.
I agree that it's, I agree that it's significant. I think it's a little too significant, which we're going to get to.
An emphasis?
Or a significant emphasis.
Yeah, I'm open to suggestions.
But I also agree with Mr. Wooster that those aspects, the steep slopes, the sensitive habitats, and whatever, they create their own restrictions for all sorts of reasons. And you don't need to direct growth away from them. They do it all by themselves. The problem I have with main emphasis is that, that's kind of a crux of the issue with a lot of people in this county is, how do you want to look? I mean, that's the statement about how does the county want to look? How do people feel about the county in terms of where growth should happen? And my position is that Calaveras County has every right to say, "We're different than other counties." And that we don't necessarily want to create high-density community centers because we're a country, we want the country feel. We want people to be able to live on their half-acre, acre, ranch type of situation, or have a little bit of space, because that affords people a choice. You want to live in stacked on top of somebody? Fine, we're not the county for you. You want to be able to live on a little bit of land where you've got some room because people drive you nuts? Come to Calaveras County. So, I mean, I know where this comes from, and I know the philosophy of directing growth to centers and creating high-density urban areas, and everything else is rural, and everything else is open space. But I don't think we have to buy into it. I don't buy into it. So, I would not like to see the general plan say that our main emphasis is to create this kind of a, this kind of a county, this kind of a community. It's, I think it's inconsistent with the way the community is now, so to the extent that consistency is important to the general plan, that cuts against the grain. It creates a different direction. I think the attractiveness of our county is that people can live differently than they would in other counties in California. This is not the first time we're going to have this discussion.
No, probably not.
It's not, because I've marked up my entire element with just exactly what he said. Directing people in and not allowing development outside of is wrong. I'm sorry. It just doesn't fit within a general plan. It's not a general plan at that point. At that point, you're telling people how they're going to live, where they're going to build, where they can shop, where they can go to the doctor. We have Boom said, "This is it, and I don't care if you have 400 acres over here, and you," it were, it's not general at that point. At that point, general is out the window, and it is specific on who can do what. And so, my whole thing is marked up with that exact thing, and it's all the way through this element.
Let me expand on my point a little bit. Environmentalists would say, "You got to put the people, stack them up, you know, condense them into the cities to leave the space open for other uses." Keeping in mind the environmental, what makes sense environmentally, if you just want to make the environmental argument, putting people in the hills in our kind of territory makes more environmental sense than putting them in the valley, in the bottom land. If you really want to protect the earth, you leave the bottom land for farming, and you put people in the hills. That's what you do. Because why? Because this soil up here is junk. If you didn't use it at all for farming, and you replaced the acres with available bottom land down there, you'd be better off. Environmentally speaking, it makes more sense to put people in the foothills where the land is junk for anything else, just about, except for cows. Okay? That's about it. And wine, grapes which grow in poor soil, and olive trees which grow in poor soil. So, environmentally speaking, it makes more sense. Now, the other aspect is the choices, just giving people a choice. There are plenty of places in California where you can live in that, in this condensed urban area. The choices are enormous. The choices for living the way many people in Calaveras County live are fewer. Viva la difference. We should be different, and we should not be trying to model ourselves after an urban county, which is where this philosophy comes from.
So, when I'm looking at this, and we're talking about with limiting development on steep slopes, well, that pretty much takes care of itself, because state law has a provision in there that if the fire trucks can't get in and out, you're not building on it anyway. Even if your house burns down, you're not going to rebuild it. So, we're already limited. And then when you go to sensitive habitats, if somebody is going to build, obviously they're going to have to do an environmental impact report, and we're going to find out that there's some sensitive issues there, and they're not going to build there. These things are already addressed through state guidelines and federal guidelines. And so, I know, in order, with what we're saying right here is, through this whole thing, it says, "We're going to tell you, you have to stay in a circle, and live in a circle, and build in a circle." If I wanted that, I could move back to the city. But this whole element is based on that. I guess, Peter, my question for you is, is that when we look at what the state says, our general plan needs to look like, and I know that our state is doing a push into stopping the outgrowth into areas and bringing them all into a circle. I get that. They don't even like us in the mountains, first of all. They want us all in a big city. So, when we're looking at that, is there anything in the guidelines that says we have to draw a circle where people can live?
No, no. We have full authority over our land use to design our general plan the way we want to. The reasons that I have recommended and the work done so far to date that has led us to this point is that there are costs associated with that dispersed land use pattern. If that's what we want to have, that's the choice that we can make. And the states and the courts defer to the local land use authorities, to you and the board, to decide how we want to develop. We have to analyze what are the impacts of that, what are the effects of that, and then we make findings to accept that or reject it, or say, "Well, gee, maybe we consider that issue a little bit." But we have the authority to design our general plan any way we want to.
Picking up on what you just mentioned, that's yet another argument that is made for this effect of putting people in the, you know, together in the city centers, is because it's more economical for infrastructure, things like fire, and ambulances, and police protection, right? It costs less to do it that way because you've got everybody herded together. So-
But they have sewers, we don't.
So, when you don't do that, it costs more. Okay. If people are willing to pay more to live in a county where they can be, have a little bit of land around them, and they're not right up next to the city, if they're willing to pay that price, then why not let them have it? If they're willing to pay more for police protection because it takes longer for police to get out there, or if they're willing to accept a lower response, a slower response time for first responders, and they're willing to pay more for water, let's say, because the pipes have to be extended, it costs money to put pipe in the ground and take it out to a neighborhood, and more so even with sewer. If they're willing to pay those prices, why not let them have it? What's the problem?
I would say there is one constraint on all of that, and that's the shared resource that's under the ground, and that's water. Because there's a limit to how many holes you can poke in the ground and pull water out without impacting the fellow next door, whose springs may dry up.
Or whose well you may be contaminating with your sewer.
Well, sewer you can deal with, but water you can't create. And that is, to me, that is the best argument for trying to direct growth or favor growth to places that do have adequate service water supplies.
And plus, you're not forcing people to live there. You're offering them a choice. Not everybody wants to live on five acres. A lot of 70-year-olds don't want to live on five acres. A lot of people that retire here and don't want to live on five acres, there's no other place for them to go.
You're absolutely right. A lot of people don't. But if the main emphasis of this general plan is to direct growth into the existing communities-
So, a significant, a significant emphasis.
Okay, then how about if we add, another significant emphasis is to allow people to have land around them and some, and small acreage, because it is a desirable lifestyle for many people who choose Calaveras County as a place to live. I mean, it's, you could take a survey and find out which is the more desirable lifestyle. But, and we certainly want to accommodate both lifestyles, don't we?
Well, I would hope so, because the one, the picture you're giving is very exclusionary to someone who can't afford five acres and dig a well and put a house on it, is that we only want those people here. We don't want someone who could live in a condo or apartment.
No, you're making an absolute that I did not make.
Well, it sounded like, just like, everybody, everybody. We should have everybody get rid of those community centers where there is more affordable housing.
Never used those phrases.
Okay.
I've just said lots of people want this lifestyle, and if the purpose of this general plan is to direct away from that lifestyle, then we have the wrong purpose. They have a choice.
I don't think it's directing it away from that lifestyle. I mean, what do we have, 13,000 parcels, right? Lots of opportunity for that lifestyle.
I don't have any issues with our towns and communities and trying to develop and getting more, you know, medical facilities and things in the town area. But I don't like the word that you're going to emphasize that we have to direct our growth into that, what I'm calling a circle, because that's basically what it's saying. We've always been able to live with options. Does somebody want to be on five acres? Yes. Does somebody want to see town develop a little bit more? Sure, they do. There's, but we should be able to have options of doing all of the above, not being directed to that.
So, how about if the general plan land use element supports growth to, I don't know, in areas, two areas?
Doesn't he read this, it doesn't support any growth? I'm sorry.
Well, then that would be a positive addition, wouldn't it? The general plan land use element supports growth to areas, or, you know, you don't have to direct it, but it could support it, two areas in and around existing communities.
Look, I think a more accurate statement would be, and a very general statement would be, that this general plan is designed to allow for a variety of lifestyles and locations for homes and businesses and et cetera, that's consistent with the characteristics of the county existing at this writing, 2015.
What did you say again? What did you say again?
I was just shortening this sentence. I just got rid of the, the significant or the main emphasis and just say, the general plan land use element supports growth to areas in and around existing communities that have or can readily be supplied with. I'd get rid of adequate because if it's not adequate, you're not gonna locate them there.
I'd get rid of.
Provided with public facilities and services.
I, 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 I'm happier with you starting it out the way that you did, but there's a few words in here that have to be cut. Limiting development. That, the word limit gets to go.
Where was limit?
She didn't include that. She took out everything starting with.
Oh, okay, you did take it out.
I took out all of the examples because, you know, there are a lot of examples.
There are.
Yeah.
The further emphasis. Peter, is that something that?
This is your opportunity.
I mean, the, the thing that strikes me about, you know, the whole, the five acre parcel thing too is, I was just reading, I think it's Vicki's Republican Party, you know, the financial impact of the general plan, the land use element. It's like, whoa, I'd like to see that if it were, you know, if we weren't trying to create alternative consolidated communities where there are services that already exist. I mean, there is, there's an economy of scale there. And you're not forcing people to live there. You're giving them an opportunity to live there by having higher density land uses where sewer and water is already located.
Look, I have no problem with our, our county making sure that we've got available development properties within city limits, city limits, community limits. That's great. That's fine. We should do that. But it's not, it shouldn't be the main focus of the general plan or this element.
The, the other thing is we've, that's what we've been doing ever since this county's been a county. I mean, it's not as like this is a new concept of, the new concept is really trying to, to accommodate more housing and business diversity in community centers.
And I think that'll still exist. A developer's gonna look at the community and they're gonna decide, if I'm building for families, I'm gonna wanna be closer into town where the infrastructure and the schools and things are. But if you're looking at somebody that has already had and lived the city life and they wanna come up here for that five acre parcel.
They should have that opportunity. I agree.
And I, I like the verbiage that you just ruled, that you just read out. It clears up a lot of the concerns that I had in that paragraph. Changing the way that you did is good with me.
Can you, can you reread? Did you sort of jot that down or did you off the top of your head?
All I did, no, no, no. All I did was just took, I just slimmed it down some. One other thing too, before I read it again, is that with this new general plan, there are like new land use designations specifically for increasing density in community centers. And that's like the community center historic, the community center, you know, local and regional. But, so this general plan right now is making a, emphasizing, it's emphasizing through those new land use designations, the allowance, which is, it's never been in place before. So it wasn't possible before to have mixed-use development. You know, historically, that's what these communities had, but they haven't been, they haven't been allowed to duplicate that until now. And, and that's what this is saying, is that now we are emphasizing, we are making this available. We're making, you know, we're allowing this higher-density, rich kind of community experience. I think that's what this is really getting at.
No, I don't think that's what this is getting at. Yes, there are, there is a, there are some components to it like housing over light industrial or housing over commercial and stuff like that that maybe didn't exist before. Fine, it's in there. That's great. Those are good components. But when you, this is talking about the direction and the emphasis of the land use element and the general plan. And that is not the direction of it. It is a component of it.
So I think we're, I mean, with this, I just wanted to, you know, mention that that, I think that the origin of this, of the emphasis is that there are these new land use designations.
That's, they're great and they're fine.
All right. So, I'll go to the sentence. And it's not, you know, it might need a little bit of wordsmithing, but basically it's the same thing that was in here but starts with the general plan land use element, supports growth in areas, I don't know, something of the way, it doesn't work by, but supports growth to areas in and around existing communities and to areas that have or can readily be supplied with public facilities and services.
I think if you change the word "to" to "in," you've got it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
One more time, please, with Kelly's.
Kelly, you read it.
The general plan land use element supports growth in areas in and around existing communities and in areas that have or can readily be supplied with public facilities and services.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, I have one more suggestion, not on that sentence, but on the next sentence. And it is, that sentence now reads, "The element further emphasizes the preservation of the county's quality of life through safe, well-designed development." There's been a suggestion that we add, quote, "while preserving property rights and addressing the needs of the marketplace," which I think says something about the five acre issue.
I think that language was added throughout in, in Peter's edits that were sent out.
You're kind of, yeah, and the, addressing the marketplace angle in economic development, which is gonna be an interesting discussion, I think, too.
By the way, Peter, I did catch.
I like, I like Mr. Booster's addition.
He'd have to read it again.
I'm sure he can do that.
Okay.
It would then read, "The element further emphasizes the preservation of the county's quality of life through self-well-designed development, comma, while preserving property rights and addressing the needs of the marketplace."
So the sentence that we started with and the one that you've added, that would be the entire paragraph.
What, what are you getting at with the needs of the marketplace? What's your, what's your interpretation of that?
Well, it would be somewhat of the point that you were making earlier, that if the market supports the availability of five acre parcels or ten acre parcels, then we wanna make sure that we are able to provide them. In other words, we don't wanna be constraining things to the point where there's a market. But the general plan has prevented anybody from using that market, selling in it or buying in it.
So I guess, what you're saying then is that we're emphasizing preservation of the county's quality of life through well-designed development. And then what's the caveat? I mean, you're, with, what was the, the last part?
While preserving property rights and addressing the needs of the marketplace.
So it's like a, it's almost like a strikeout. So you're, you're saying this right here, but oh, by the way, if these things outweigh that, then the preservation of the county's quality of life is.
If I could interject, I think that that gets to sort of what you guys have stated in the vision statement, that, and what I've been saying, you know, this is a balancing act and that we're looking at, you know, a broad range of interests and concerns about how we're going to grow in the future. And that this commission feels that property rights are very important, that the market has a role, but we do want good quality development. And that as we analyze and review projects that come forward, those are going to be the things that we look at. That it's not solely one of those issues, but it's all of those issues together. And I think for an introductory statement, that's fine. Anything along those lines is, are fine. You know, the, the details will be when we get to the actual policy language says, here's what you're gonna have to do when you submit your development proposal.
And Mr. Booster's comment, his addition makes sense because it creates, it, it, it shows the balancing act. We want well-designed development. There might be a market demand for junk, but we're not going for it. On the other hand, there might be market demand for million-dollar homes on five acre parcels. And we're gonna allow for that because that's well-designed and there's a market demand. We're, it's gonna be available. So I like Mr. Booster's addition. I like those two sentences total for this paragraph and I'm, with that, I went, I'm ready to move on.
Kind of a weird statement coming from me, considering my profession, but I'm okay with well-preserved property rights, but the needs of the marketplace, I'm having a hard time putting into the land use element. I, I don't see the fit and I don't know why I don't see that.
Let me help. I think what.
David, you're gonna help me?
I'm gonna help you.
Okay, let's do it.
The, the addition of the language suggests that the market demands shape what land use element, what, what happens with land use. You can't, you can't ignore what, you can't ignore the marketplace when you are looking at the design of your, the design is the wrong word, but the, the mix of available lands and uses in, in this, in this element. You can, if you were to ignore it, you could say, well, we want this, that, and the other thing. And if there's no market demand for that, you're just spitting in the wind. You're just, you're dreaming. It's a, it's, it's a very powerful force on what happens in any location. So it deserves mention in this introductory portion, which is a very general statement. And it's undeniably true. You would know that by being a real estate agent. People come to your office and you say, a couple comes to your office and they say, you know, we're looking for a home in this price category with these kinds of topographical features and a view and whatever and, and not too far from a town. Okay? That's a market force. That's, that's market, that's a perfect example of a, a market-driven decision.
I know what a marketplace is and I know what market-driven decision is. I just am trying to correlate that particular word to land use element. Where, where, I, I know there's a place for the verbiage that you're talking about. I just don't know that it's right there.
Introduction, you know, short blurb.
You're the chair. Take over.
It's part of the, you know, as I was talking about, I mean, it's, you know, I, personally, I don't think it's needed, the whole part. But the whole discussion about the balance is, you know, well-taken. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Okay?
I'm good.
All right.
So we've got, for clarification, we've got Fawn's first statement and Mr. Booster's second sentence combined for a new paragraph.
And Ted agrees.
Yeah, I agree.
Moving along on background and setting, at the bottom of page LW two, there's a sentence that reads, "More recently, a specific plan was adopted for large development projects," should be project, "in the Copperopolis area, comma, Oak Canyon Ranch." How, how recent was that adoption?
Oh, I got it.
Ninety-four, thank you.
Ninety-four?
That's not very recent.
Okay, I do believe that Oak Canyon Ranch has recently sold, not to a developer, but to a person who raises cows. And has leased that ranch for many, many, many years. And so I, it may be a bit misleading to emphasize this because it implies that there is going to be, in fact, a large development project and that may well not be the case.
Well, the reason why I put that in there was because I was talking about other plans that affect the development patterns of the county. And that plan is in place, there's a development agreement. And until the new landowner decides he wants to change that plan, that is the operative plan for the county. It's still on the books. Yeah. And more recent, it was more recent than the adoption of those other community plans. So those are planning documents that have shaped the county over the years. Yeah, sort of history and background of, you know, of how development has occurred. I agree with you that we really don't know what the ranching family intends to do with that. They could be holding on to it until the market turns around and then they can sell it for a pretty penny and buy ten times more acres to graze their cattle on. Or they could decide that this is, we wanna keep it this way for as long as we own it. I, I don't know. They haven't told us what the long-term plans are.
If you'd like to clarify, Saddle Creek is ninety-four. Oak Canyon Ranch is one, two thousand four, has nine years remaining.
Okay, thanks.
Any other, are we moving on to economic development?
I like it as it reads.
I have a few problems with it. I'm good with the first couple of sentences until we get to, it says, "Market forces are the principal mechanism driving the economy." And then government action through its general plan can assist or hinder those forces, but can do little to individual property owners and business owners who will decide to establish a business in the county if it makes sense to do so. I, I totally disagree with that, those statements or those sentences. And by example, ask some of the miracle, medical marijuana dispensaries how successful they have been because of the county's actions, basically, you know, that's restricting them to commercial professional zones. So by that very recent example, you can see that government action or that the county can do, either they can encourage or they can hinder through land use. So I think by denying them or saying that they have no power to do so is, I disagree with that. Now, as an alternative.
You're looking at the last paragraph?
The last two sentences of the first paragraph.
Right.
Last two sentences of the first paragraph.
Right.
Market, starting with market forces?
Right. The county does have the ability to influence economic climate.
And your problem is with the portion, but can do little to significantly affect the marketplace and change economic climate. And you're using the marijuana example.
I'm also using, I'm, you, individual property owners and business owners will decide to establish a business in the county if it makes economic sense to. I'm saying that it's not just an individual properties owner, owners saying, I'm gonna decide to locate there unilaterally. That's not the way it works.
Well, it says it can assist or hinder. You didn't read that sentence. You skipped over it. I don't know if you did it intentionally.
No, 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 no. I read that one first. All right, so let me just offer an alternative.
Okay.
That I think gets at the same thing, but you guys will tell me, I'm sure. "The county understands that economic development planning is a process to organize, analyze, plan, and then implement actions to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for county residents. The nature of economics is cyclical, based on a combination of factors, including product life cycles, applications of technology, government interventions, and a host of other indicators." Very general. We like general. "Because of this, development will happen in community whether or not it is planned. However, with good planning, the county can be more successful and capture a greater share of economic growth by having land planned and zoned for business and industry."
What are you reading from, Fawn?
I'm reading from my notes.
Go ahead. I think I have, I think I know where your problem is with the last sentence of the first paragraph. And your example is kind of well-taken, but here's my point. The last sentence reads, "Individual property owners and business owners will decide to establish a business in the county if it makes economic sense to do so." The statement is inherently true, but just deciding to establish a business doesn't mean you get to do it. And there's various codes and ordinances and all sorts of things that may prevent you from doing that, but that doesn't mean that you haven't decided to establish the business.
So, did you guys like the statement she read?
Actually, I have it written down. I could share it with you.
I think that'd be amazing.
All right, so, but you're also going to get, I have, when we get to the economic development, actual policies and goals, it's on here too, so you get a little preview.
We won't look past that one paragraph.
Don't look past the one paragraph.
What paragraph am I supposed to look at and not look past?
The very first one. No, you couldn't look past because of-
Do you have one for out there?
And that?
Me?
I know. Peter, I'll share it with you. So it's very general. It encompasses more than market forces because there are more than market forces at work here. And it kind of sets the stage for economic development. Why are we, you know, why are we planning this? We're planning this to try and encourage business growth.
And are you recommending that this be, the entire paragraph be substituted for this, or just the last sentence or two?
Just start it, get rid of market forces and insert that to the already first part of that paragraph. "So keep a strong economy is essential for the prosperity of the county citizens, the livability of the county, and to provide a tax base from which the county can fund needed services."
So you would replace this, starting from market?
Yes.
I can see, I can see it as an addition, but not necessarily as a replacement, but I have a question, a problem with one of your combinations here. I'll just, it's the second sentence. "The nature of economics is cyclical based upon yada, yada, yada."
Mm-hmm.
And then the next sentence reads, "Because of this, development will happen in a community whether it is planned, whether or not it is planned." I don't see the nexus.
Well, because there are market forces. I mean, there's cyclical, you know, there's things going on all the time, and if you don't plan, chances are you're going to end up with some kind of growth somewhere. The point is, is that if you don't plan, it doesn't mean that you're going to stay the same. Everything is not static. The purpose of planning is to help create, is to have growth happen where you'd like it to be, not have it happen to you. So-
I could see this as an addition. I just, I don't know that it needs to replace anything that's in here now.
Well, one reason is that this sentence in the last, the individual property owners and business owners decide to establish, you know, it's like it's their decision. It's not their decision. You can't decide to locate in a place that there are no, there's no land or-
You could decide to do it. It doesn't mean you're going to do it, is my point. You could decide you're going to do that, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily going to happen. There's still regulations that you are, that you have to comply with.
So you're setting somebody up for a, I mean, why have that? What's the purpose? No, seriously, aren't you?
Because that is how, that is, that is how, that is what happens to begin with. That's how it happens. A business owner, a business person decides they want to build something someplace, okay? That's what starts the ball rolling. From there, it goes to whether or not it needs zoning, whether or not there's an ordinance that's in that way.
So it sounds like what you would call a tire baby. Seems a lot, very specific, and-
What are you talking about?
Well, you're saying that this on itself does not stand alone. You're saying you have to add on all of these other things to it.
But everybody knows that.
Do they? I don't think so.
You believe that everybody thinks that all a person has to do is decide they're going to make or start a business, and that makes it happen?
According to this, yes. That's what you said.
You think these people are that dumb?
I'm not saying anyone's that dumb. I'm saying, why would you set someone up saying something without, if you're going to do that, then put it-
Do you think that a person reading our general plan from the outside world, "Oh, I'm a businessman, and all I need to do is decide to do something, and Calaveras County's going to let me do it?"
So David, maybe you should put all the qualifiers in there then.
Ay, 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 ay. I'm giving people a little bit more credit than that, okay?
I think the phrase is establish a business, or the word establish, and what I was trying to say was that the market is going to lead to that decision that I'm going to try to open a business. I can see Fawn's point in that it doesn't say that there are potential constraints that may prohibit that business from being established in that location. And I think the language that Fawn has, you know, written is fine. Maybe we substitute that for the last sentence, or we modify that last sentence to clarify that that's the driving force, is someone who thinks they're going to make money from a certain business, and they're going to pursue then the establishment of that business. But that policies, what I'm trying to get at was that the policies of the county have very little influence on the decision by someone to subdivide their land, to open a business, that it's going to be based on the world economy and the marketplace. And, you know, we stopped building houses in this county because, nothing the county did. It was because there was no longer a demand for housing in Calaveras County. And that may change. Hope it does, to some degree. The ability for businesses to open will happen because there will be people to buy their product. Or some may decide to move here because they can, they prefer to live here, and there is a ready workforce available for them to do so. I talked to a friend of mine that has a business in Hayward, and he wants to relocate to Calaveras County, but doesn't have a trained workforce.
Bring it on.
Let me know what I can do to help.
Where's my chunk of red carpet?
So those kinds of decisions, you know, yes, there are constraints and, you know, enticements that we might provide that could help someone choose Calaveras over Amador or Toomey or some other location. But ultimately, that decision is going to be based on a much broader context than just simply what our general plan is. That was the point I was trying to get at. And however you guys want to tweak that to make it more accurate, I'm fine with.
Well, and my point too is that you could still have lots of businesses interested in locating here, but they can't do it if there is no land planned and zoned for industry, right?
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, that's my point. It's like if you don't, if there's no, you could have, and that has to do with this land use element and the land use designations, and in terms of economic development, that's the first thing you have to look for, is a piece of ground. And if there is no piece of ground, they're going to go someplace else.
I think what Peter had written here is actually accurate, including the last couple of sentences. And I think it's important to sort of set the tone for what's happening here. We can only do so much. I also think that what Fawn has come up with is, should be included, I would tweak it a little bit. I don't know that we need to say the county understands something. We could just say, "Economic development planning is a process to organize."
Like that?
And the third sentence that begins, "Because of this," I would just strike that because it doesn't necessarily follow. But other than those minor changes, I think what Fawn has come up with ought to be included.
I'm good with that.
You too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You would slug it in at the end of this, or?
Well, she was proposing to strike and add, so I guess we need clarity before we say we're good.
So is the plan, though, is to leave the market force, that whole part intact?
And add yours at the end of that paragraph. I think it's a new paragraph, actually.
And so what about the county recognizes that there are many people and entities? I mean, what's the purpose of that?
Basically, it's saying what you're saying up here, it's being flexible in nature. We're duplicating some language.
I'm with Mr. Wooster that I like what Peter has written. And adding Fawn's paragraph at the end or in the middle, I don't really care. I think his minor changes are well-taken. Just add it in. If it means we say something a couple of different times, a couple of different ways, that's no big deal.
Are we good with this?
What would you strike?
Well, I don't think you need the whole last paragraph.
Oh, I like that. Goals and policies are being interpreted.
I know, I got that sense, so. I was, I was reading the writing. It was on the wall, and I was seeing it.
You still need to make your point.
Well, yeah, so, but I think I have. I think I have.
So is the consensus that we keep?
Everything the way it is, but just adding. And I don't really know if you even need this anymore.
You're feeling that this is needed, but as a replacement for something?
Yes, and so, I mean, I, you know, it's, it's-
The consensus is that we don't want to delete anything that's here now.
That's exactly what I got.
Okay.
I like the part of the nature of economics is cyclical, though, because that's a huge component there.
Well, we could, we could, we could add on, we could include it then. So everything stays the same with the addition of Kelly's edits to my paragraph.
Which goes at the end?
I'd insert it as a separate paragraph.
Separate paragraph.
At the end.
At the beginning?
I'd do it in the middle.
At the end, in the middle?
In the middle.
In the middle.
In the middle would be best.
Okay.
There you go. Insert.
All right. If we get to land use, I mean, economic development.
Maybe I'm going to copy of it.
Okay. So-
One more question on economic development. The second sentence is, "More recently, housing development, tourism, and service industries have become key contributors to the economy." I'm not so sure that's actually true now with respect to housing development.
Well, more recent than gold mining and timber extraction, I think, is the, that's the way I read it.
I would argue that there, even though it's certainly slowed down in the last several years, it's still a very strong component of our economy. We've got people in the real estate industry, we've got builders, we've got contractors that are all involved in that business, that industry, that rely heavily on that.
Maybe if you said construction? Mostly it's housing, though.
Yeah.
Well, it might be slightly more accurate if the phrase "have become" got changed to "became" key contributors to the economy.
That's fine.
Are we, are we good here? Do you want to take a short break, and then we'll have public comment? Yeah?
Yeah.
So-
Then maybe they can have time to read what we're talking about inserting to.
Yeah. Would seven minutes be enough?
You don't want the shared-
Oh, I don't care. It's like, you guys can all look at it, they could look at it, yeah.
If we got it, it has to be public.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll go and run some copies of this.
All right, all right. Just a little precursor to future conversation. So 11:15, is that enough time for you guys? Okay, so we're recessed 11:15? And we'll come back and give you guys a shot at this. Question on the land use element, particularly the introduction, the background setting
Good morning. My name's Bob Guaramendi, and I'm here representing the Calaveras Ag Coalition, which is made up of the Calaveras County Farm Bureau, Calaveras County Cattlemen's Association, Wine Grape Alliance, and Calaveras Growing. I would first like to lead off by saying I really take exception to somebody saying, "Our soil is junk and our land is junk." There's a perspective there that obviously isn't aware that the county has the best conditions and soil for raising conifers almost in any other place in the world. We raise world-class wines. We have pasture lands that are envy of many other places in this state. We have walnuts, apples. When you look back 150 years, we had everything but vegetables, and it's just a matter of will, the marketplace. I also take exception to the perspective of the commission when it comes to property We, the, those organizations represent landowners that probably have over 200,000 acres in this county. And that includes, that number's just based off of ag preserve lands and TPC lands. That doesn't include the 40-acre or 20-acre small operations. One of the biggest problems that we have in agriculture is just what Mr. Tuno is promoting, and that is sort of a random growth in which houses could be built up against these resource production lands. You know, your million-dollar home or a chicken farm, who's going to win? Who has one in the past? And our organization- And our organization is trying to promote the production, the resource production in this county, which has historically been significant and continues to be, even through the downturn in housing. We need to be protected. Our operations, our land, need to be protected from incompatible uses. And when you talk about growth, you have to take, you have to balance these things. You can't just say we should grow anywhere and anyplace, because then you're impinging on other people's property rights by putting homes or putting incompatible uses next to resource-based production or lands. So I ask that you, and this has been a theme throughout, that in your consideration of the general plan moving forward and the elements, be thinking of that other perspective of the landowner and their rights to produce, whether it be cattle, timber, mining, or any other resource-based production. I think it's, it would help this whole process if there is that kind of balance as you move forward. And I hope you will move forward with that perspective. A quote here, it is wrong to direct growth. I think that's what general plans are all about, is where you're going to have your resources, protecting them, whether it be environmental purposes or production purposes, or where you're going to have your growth, your homes, and how they're going to impact what it is you want to see in the county. So I just would like to see some balance in the perspective of this commission. From the standpoint of private property rights, you certainly are concerned about the individual being able to build somewhere. And I think what we just experienced, we have to really look at that carefully today. And as far as this health and safety, but my particular point right now is the private property rights of those landowners that are out there, that are working today, producing, making dollars, original dollars off of that land. And that when you talk about growth, that you have to also be thinking about protecting them as well. Thank you.
Sure. Bob, there's a.
Can I ask you a question?
Could you come back up?
You're saying that you're taking exception to the property rights when it comes to ag and TCP lands, and that you want balance, and you talk about somebody wanting to build a house next to the resource production lands and how, I'm just asking, can you give me an example of how somebody building a house next to a resource production has a negative impact? Because don't ranchers have homes on their properties, too? I'm just curious.
Okay, Golden Hill subdivision.
Okay.
Five-acre lots.
Okay.
A ranch next to it had a hunting preserve on it, bow and arrow. Neighbors came in here, Ted, I think you were on the board at the time. And this went on for weeks, maybe months, the argument about the danger that that operation had on the residents of that subdivision. It was never proven, nothing was ever proven, but it took a tremendous amount of time for the landowner, the operator, and the residents of that subdivision. Another one I'll give you is that a subdivision that sits right above a ranch that I'm aware of was complaining about the cow bells. Every, every, well, spring or early summer, some ranchers take their cattle to the mountains, they bell their animals. And they're, they keep them in maybe a few days, maybe a week, depending on the situation, and then they ship them out, complaints about that. Weaning cattle. There's calves that are there that are calling for their moms. It's a process. Having people next to that, it's problematic. You just spent an hour today talking about a resource-based base use down next to a subdivision. That is a very current example of what happens when you put an incompatible use next to resource-based production.
Okay.
And that, you know how much time that's taken of you folks? And I can cite, my mouth, I know Kelly can cite scores of examples where there's incompatibility between residential use, or there can be, it's not always the case, but there can be, between resource-based production and residential use.
Okay, thank you.
I think, as I said before, the biggest problem is the water, because there are examples where people come in and drill wells and the rancher's springs dry up. Can we prove that's what happened? Well, it's pretty coincidental that when those, you know, four houses went in within a quarter or half a mile, the spring's gone. It's happened to us, it's happened to Walter Valenti, it's happened to other people. That's the real worst effect. Because when a spring goes, it's gone forever. I mean, then you're relying on something mechanical to get water out of the ground like everybody else.
Could I add just one thing? Kelly mentioned it in your early discussion about parcels, and the fact that they're assessor parcels. And assessor parcels are not legal parcels. And my guess is that I wouldn't be surprised that the majority of those assessor parcels are not legal parcels. Highway can split, like Kelly described, a tax line can split a legal parcel in half. We have that case on our property countless times, where, you know, if you looked at the, let's just, for example, say there's 50 parcels, assessor parcels, but there may only be 25 legal parcels. So that's something to consider, I think, in looking at those numbers and coming up with something that's anywhere near valid. And how you determine a legal parcel, people are in court all the time doing that.
Well, and if you look at the wagon trail, it's going to create.
So it's problematic, and I think his point about the assessor parcel is a very valid point.
I would add, you bring up the point about protection of property rights of the ag, of the resource production people, okay? And you bring up these examples of a subdivision where complaints were made and whatnot, a subdivision, or complaining about something that was longstanding, cows with bells, bow and arrow hunting. My position is that that's not a problem of where to put, where to allow housing to grow, but what to do about people who complain about such things. I have a problem with those people. Not that they were allowed to build a house or a neighborhood next to a ranch, my problem is if they then complain about it. So I'll deal with it on the other side.
I appreciate that, but again, here in these chambers, we spent months on this thing called Rooster Gate or something like that, where there was a subdivision. What was it?
Rooster.
Where there was. Five-acre subdivision, I think it is.
Yeah.
Was. And they had, it was rural residential, and they had, they raised chickens, and they had roosters. And that was a fight, it was very divisive. It was ugly at times, that this, that we're right here in this chamber for months, I think maybe even years, it went on for several years. An example, that's another example of a small, within its own, that gets into more zoning, but another example at Murphy's, the zanga, it's used to repel birds out of the vineyards. I sat on a ag advisory committee or dispute committee, and people were complaining that this gun's going off, you know, I don't know what time it was, but they were complaining. It was to chase the birds away.
Sure.
And these are things, you know, most people are fine with it. They love, they love the ability to live next to a ranch or vineyard or something like that. The point is, it doesn't take very many, or maybe only one, in the case of the rooster. You know, it was a very serious issue.
And my point is, to clarify, you're always going to have people that complain about stuff like that. You cannot.
Not necessarily. You folks right now.
You can't design around that.
Yes, you. That's exactly what you're doing. That's exactly what you're doing right now.
You would have to create zones around every chicken ranch beyond the smell of the chicken ranch.
You're right.
Okay, you know, then you just create dead zones around industrial areas and around certain ag uses.
So your answer is to put homes up against it and deal with the people?
I speak the Kings pretty well, okay? That's not what I said. What I'm saying is that when a neighborhood, let's say, is built proximate to a cattle ranch with bells on their cows, or a chicken ranch, right? And those people then later come and complain about the smell of the chicken ranch, if I'm sitting in this chair, I'm saying, tough! You bought a home, you were looking at the chicken ranch, what did you think it was going to smell like? That's the end of my discussion.
Well, we know that argument's been used in airports for years.
I know it's been used for airports.
Listen, I know who wins those arguments, and it's not the landowner.
Then it's the, then if the wrong people have been winning those arguments, it's because the wrong people have been sitting up here in the past.
This is what I'm asking, is please give consideration to that fact. That's in the process, give consideration to that.
And I think that's what, I think that's really what our charge is and what we're doing, and rather than trying to mitigate after the fact, you know, and we just saw, we have a lot of vacant land here, we have a lot of land, we have a lot of opportunities to create buffers between resource production areas, which, if you talk about economic development, are also, you know, they generate wealth. So it's not like we have, we don't have enough. So I think we have a lot of land here that if we plan for protection of those uses, and especially those job-generating, you know, your wealth-generating uses, I don't think it's an either nor. I think we can, you know, that's really our charge, is to find that right balance.
And that's what we ask, is when you, when you talk about private property rights, when you talk about people going out and building where they want, or the five-acre parcels, give that consideration as well. Because that is, and it will remain, and it's a growing factor in our economy in this county. These small operations are becoming a factor in our economy.
Let me ask a real estate expert a question.
Well.
What kind of disclosures are there that address? Sorry, your name again?
You can call me Bob.
Bob, what kind of disclosures exist that address the kind of concerns that Bob brought up that are legitimate concerns?
Anytime you buy property in Calaveras County, every sale requires the ag ordinance disclosure.
I'm very aware of that.
And so anybody that buys gets that. So they are told, and they don't have a right to debate, whether it's chickens, cows, the ranch, the wineries with the shotguns going off, I don't care what it is.
And I think we're just like exhausted this one, but I think the point is, it may not have a right to debate, but they still do. And that, I think that's.
They actually have a right to debate. Whether or not they're correct is the other argument.
All right, I think, I thank you so much, Bob.
That was it. Thank you for answering my question.
I hope I did.
You did.
Who's next? Step on up.
My name is Keith Talia. I think the answer to Mr. Toono's question is, who, what was there first, the chicken or the egg? A good example of this is the airport of Sacramento. They built the airport out in farmland, and now they allowed a mobile home park at the north end of the runway, and the people are all complaining about the noise.
Thank you, Mr. Talia.
I don't think these things can all be taken care of in the general plan.
Exactly.
Vicky Rainkey, Calaveras County Republicans. I want to start by saying thank you again for the effort you guys are putting into this process. I think you're doing a great job at it, and for us, we're pleased to see that there is another opportunity to make sure that this general plan becomes more general, becomes more flexible, protects property rights, protects, to me, the ag people, the people that have lived here all their lives, I know several of the families, to me, they're the salt of the earth, and absolutely, we want to protect their property rights. But when we talk about protecting property rights, yes, somebody might build a development because that's their property, they have the right to develop it. And I agree 100% with David Toono since this all came up, that those people have no right to complain. When they come here, they should be told, well, you know what, you bought your house there. I know that sounds cruel, but it's the fact. I've lived in other cities where the neighbors wanted to decide that a road shouldn't go in because they don't like a road. Well, that road was designed way before we ever moved there. So they would come knocking on my door, and I'd say, you know what, you have no right to do that. That road has been planned. Why did you buy your house here? So I guess, you know, it's a difference in attitude, and I think we need to start standing up a little bit more towards those attitudes so that these ranchers can continue to be ranchers. We need to continue that attitude so that when something is going to be built in an industrial park that fits there, people can't stop it because they just decide they don't want it. Anyway, thank you, Bob, for bringing all that up, because it gets me on my soapbox, too, because I think that's what property rights are to us. They're allowing people that own property, if they want to have a farm and a ranch, that they should be able to have that. Sadly, if your neighbor owns some property next to you and they decide to develop it, hopefully you can work together with them, but those neighbors then should not be able to complain that you have a cow on your property. And so that's sort of an attitude thing. And again, with what we discussed so far today, I think it's great. I'm finding that this is being written more general so that it isn't going to restrain people from doing things, including ag. I would love to see timber become bigger in our community, ag becoming bigger, but my understanding, when I talk to people that I've met that are locals here, they say a lot of it's government regulation that's hurt them. I think we should be working on finding out how you get that out of their lives, because, again, they're the people that work our lands, who grow our cattle. To me, they're just the greatest. There was one other point. Anyway, maybe I'll think of it and come back later, but thank you again, and we hope that we can keep helping to give our input into this, and thank you for accepting that. That is what I think the community input is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
I'm Segala Taxpayer Association. I also want to thank this commission. You're doing, actually, you're doing better than most people would expect. You're putting thought, and it's not just property rights that you're looking at, you're looking at something that can work, that's realistic, and this is really great, and our taxpayer association really appreciates that. We don't have the attorneys and experts and money to provide better support for you, but we're doing the best we can. Some of these issues that we talk about, for instance, probably one of the special interest groups in this county, which is, I think, a wonderful group, is the ag people. And we've got to remember, the ag people have property rights, and their neighbors also have property rights. And what was discussed already about disclosure in selling property is, I know it's real, and there's always people that will complain regardless of what. We have, we're blessed in Western civilization and in our country with two processes, two legal processes. One is common law. Common law is, involves the contracts that you have, and involves when people hurt other people, it's called a trespass. There's more ways of trespassing than just walking on somebody's property. You can trespass on their rights with other things. What has happened over the last 50 years. What has happened over the last 50 years, regulatory law or political law has, has taken over common law in many areas. And we look to the politicians to solve problems between people that really should be solved in common law. I know that's, that's a hard concept to get a hold of now, but when, when a person does something to harm their neighbors, it shouldn't be the politician they run to. It should be common law, they should take them to court. The first rule is, you know, you do unto others or you have them do unto you. And sometimes that doesn't work, and when it doesn't, then common law is the way to resolve the disputes that are, that relate to property rights. Not, not the politician and, and not the regulators. One of the things that, to us, is really important, is simple. The general plan needs to be general, it needs to be freedom-friendly, which means it, it cannot dissuade people who'd want to come to this county to do something, providing they don't hurt their neighbors, from doing it. We can't be overloaded with bureaucracy. We, we can't set up roadblocks for people that want to come here to be productive. That is the essence of, of a, of a market economy. You can't ignore a market economy.
Mr. Segala, you've got about a minute left.
One left, okay. Well, let, let's talk about the market economy. Market economy, sometimes it's called free trade, sometimes it's called the marketplace. What it is, is people exercising their rights to life, liberty, and property. Since they have a right to own property, they have the right to exchange it, sell it. And because they have freedom, liberty, they have the ability to do so. All common law is based on that. So if you, if you want to, to have a prosperous society, you need to have respect for those individual rights of life, liberty, and property, which is the marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Evidently, most people don't want to fill this out, because the last person that did was Janice. My name is Vicki Mills. I want to get back a little more on topic here, or whatever. In the part where it says, "More recently, a specific plan was adopted in a, for a large development project in Copper Rock, Alaska area, Oak Canyon Ranch." That is totally misleading with the part where it says, "more recently." Yes, there is a development on the books. More recently was years ago. They asked for at least one to two extensions on it before they decided to sell it to the rancher that now owns it, who has said publicly he will never develop it as long as he owns it. So I would like the words "more recently" struck, as they are very misleading to anybody reading it. Next, and I find myself in a weird position because nine times out of 10, I disagree with Fawn and agree with Kelly and David and Lisa, and this time, I totally agree with Fawn that the part where it says, "market forces," from there to the end of that paragraph, should go bye-bye, okay? Because the county affects it so much with their regulations and everything that to say that can do little or no significant effect on the marketplace and change the economic climate of the county is totally wrong. And Fawn is correct in using the medical marijuana people as an example. And I think that, there was one other thing, but I'll let it go with just those two because those are weird enough for my little psyche right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou Mayhew. I, I encourage you to clarify the data about the number of parcels and the existing land use designations and so forth. I think that's a good thing to do. But I think it's also important to keep it there, to have it. It's, it's good perspective. I, I think in general, you could say that the data that we have points to a direction of an oversupply of available land for building, perhaps especially for five-acre parcels and up. So I, I think Mr. Toono was quite concerned about lack of availability of that. I think probably the reality will be shown to be that there is plenty of opportunity, even if you subtract out unbuildable parcels. And if that's so, that's an important fact that you need to do. When you start making decisions, policy decisions, about how you want to shape in a general way where growth will go. That's not prevent growth, that's shape the direction where it can go more easily. You always have, have the right to propose a development in, in a land use designation that, that your, your proposal really is, is in conflict with. You just have to go through a few more hoops to protect the public interest to get it. So I, so I think that data is important. In general, I appreciate the efforts to clarify language, make it mean something, and so forth. But I also hear a tendency to use and insert the language "private property rights" in a way that seems to be wanting to facilitate the ease of development. And to me, you can do that to the extent that you harm the private property rights of existing owners. So you make it too easily, too easy for an incompatible development to be proposed next, next to whether it's a ranch or a subdivision or wherever. But for the developer to come in and cite all of this language in the new general plan regarding private property rights to override what are not total barriers, barriers, but partial barriers, or hoops that that development would have to go through. So in general, I, I, this is getting to be a serious rewrite, I think, of the intent of the draft general plan. The wordsmithing is so complex at this point, sitting in the audience is extremely difficult to follow. You almost, we almost would need to have another version, whatever you come up with today, printed out so you can really digest the implications. But again, what you're doing, the greater scheme, is you're trying to shape growth, mitigate incompatible uses. You can't prevent them, but there are mechanisms for dealing with that, to the extent you can. And I, I think that's, that's healthy, what we hope for, and there's nothing wrong with that. I think the, to a great extent, the echo chamber of incompatible, well, no, the echo chamber of projects denied because of this, that, or the other thing is an exaggeration that there are not sufficient protections for new development and to get through the process. I'm sure there have been examples of, of where that's not the case. But in general, I think that's an echo chamber that then get, gets cycled back around to, well, what we need is private property rights, which as the Republican Party and the Taxpayers Association uses it means the right to have my project approved much more easily despite the existing land use designations and zoning. So I, I think it really harms a-
You've got about a minute, Lou.
Anyway, I, I think that's the sum. The only way I know to comment is kind of in general, the direction that I pick up, that I, that I hear you going, and I hope you'll be a little more cautious and respectful of people who, existing property owners who have concerns about it being too easy for a new development to, that's incompatible to come in. And, and also, perhaps, a certain acknowledgement that business people, most of them are good, we want to welcome them, but there are folks who simply want to change land use designations, zoning, get projects approved for the monetizing effect that it has. Yet, they think will, their land becomes more valuable as soon as they do that. And, and so be a, be a little skeptical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty Crane, Valley Springs. Not quite sure where to start, but we've heard from people who have firsthand knowledge about private property rights, their existing land uses, and it's my hope that we will take those words and take them to heart, and not just say, "property rights." Property rights is a hollow statement, as far as I'm concerned. You know, it's like, well, whose property rights? You know, and when we do, as has been, feels like it's being suggested, that, well, we'll deal with the arguments later, you know? That creates dissension in our community, and I think that our, I, I don't know how you can build and embrace a sense of, of community and a sense of place where people will live with a quality of life that is desirable if you don't, if you, if you put them in, if you set people up to be argumentative, if you set them up for, for dissension. And I think our challenge here is, for the commissioners, is to, is to plan to try to avoid that sort of thing and help the people live successfully and in harmony. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in?
I think we know who she is.
I'll do it, thank you.
We do know who you are, though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Joe Kelly from the unrepresented area of District One. Questions, how many California codes are there causing duplication of responsibility, authority, and enforcement passing from state to county dealing with land use that are not directly addressed in the general plan? I've probably got six of them in my hand right here. We have a problem in the county. You folks are trying to put together a general plan to do all this good work to make this county grow, hopefully, in a, in a proper way. But we have, at the upper end, we have some kind of a problem because we don't get enforcement of the laws that are in place. I've been dealing with it for over 10 years. Government Code Section 65302 and the safety element and the, what is it, the other element? Land use element, talk about it, on flooding and floodplain management. There's other issues in here. The Right to Farm Act, the county has an ordinance. It is nowhere near as good as the issue of, let's see. Right to Farm Act, California Civil Code 3482.5. This thing is much broader, more strict, and regulates, and does protect agriculture, and does, if agriculture does wrong, it punishes them. Which then comes into another point of mind. It's past time lands in Calaveras County in the Williamson Act not being used as contracted should be investigated and the problem cured. That was brought up by me one time before the Board of Supervisors and the ag commissioner came up and said, yeah, there are properties here, they're in the Williamson Act, and they shouldn't be. But nothing's been done about it, why is that? We don't have the manpower, we don't have the dollars? We don't have anything in this county, no enforcement. The issue of disclosures. We're given a natural hazards disclosure, which has a front-page disclosure also that negates the disclosure. Because it says, we didn't do anything, we didn't come out and investigate the property, they're going by FEMA. FEMA doesn't know, didn't know until it came here and started doing things, and it still doesn't know what it's done and hasn't done, because not everything's come to pass. And this is what's irritating, the be Jesus out of me, and no offense to the Lord. But the county needs to get its head out of that place where the sun don't shine and do its job, fully. I'm amazed, I sat here today listening to you folks, I'm impressed, I truly am, that you can put out your points, they can put out their points, you folks can not argue, you folks can discuss and iron them out. That's good, that's what we need in this county. But we're not receiving it beyond here possibly, because, and I don't know why. To answer my question of that, of their, their, the duplication of responsibility and authority, it, it's not just certain civil codes, but it also goes into, for example, a water code, This chapter may be cited as the Kobe Alquis Floodplain Management Act. And that talks about the primary responsibility for planning, adoption, and enforcement of land use regulations. To accomplish floodplain management rests with the local levels of government. Oh, wow! Board of Supervisors don't know that, but they've been told that. We have other issues here. This one is a state issue, hasn't come down to the county, it should, or they should be dealing with them, the code enforcement should be assisting these folks to get the thing done, and they're not. But it's Fish and Game Code, Section 16001616, 1602. An entity may not substantially divert or obstruct the natural flow of or substantially change or use of any material from the bed, channel, or, excuse me, bank of any river, stream, lake, or deposit or dispose of debris, waste, or other materials containing crumbled flake or ground pavement where it may pass into any river, stream, or lake unless all the following occur.
Mr. Kelly, you've got a minute.
Thank you. The final thing on this one, though, is interesting enough, and it appears nobody in the county understands it all too, and code enforcement is involved now. This subdivision applies only if notice and agreement with the department, which would be Fish and Game, was attained prior to January 1st, 1977, and the department has been provided a copy of the agreement or other proof of the existence of the agreement that satisfies the department if requested. The last sentence in this thing is, "It is unlawful for any person to violate this chapter." So what the hell are we doing? We have so much violations in this county, and nobody wants to do anything about it. Everything's just grand. We should all go down that little paved road and enjoy life. Yeah, right, we should all be in a, in Salem asylum. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't usually do it that way. It's up to you guys.
I'm the chair.
Okay. Make it quick.
Okay. On this thing about private property rights, I'm assuming, and I hope I'm correct, that what we're doing today is just really, really vague in general, and we will get into actually addressing private property rights and making sure that there is a, I guess, a buffer zone of sorts between existing farms and ranches and where people can develop their property. of sorts between existing farms and ranches, and where people can develop their property. I don't know if it's going to have to be something that's done with the supervisors as an ordinance saying you have to have so much setback, or what? But I'm assuming you, as a commission, will address that in more detail later on.
Well, what we're doing today actually does address that by establishing sort of policies for land uses, so we are doing it today.
But you're not going to be--
Parcel-specific.
Right. That's going to be when you get to the maps, correct?
Probably, yes.
I just wanted to be assured that when you get to the maps, something like that would be addressed. That's my whole thing.
Thank you.
I told you to be quick.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elaine St. John, I live in Copropolis, and I want to thank you all for such a great job that you're doing. I was originally kind of alarmed. I'm kind of a newbie to the area. I came from the Monterey Bay area, where Santa Cruz and Monterey are nearby, and they're so overregulated. And it's so restrictive that, basically, if you cut a branch the size of your finger, you need to get a permit, and they'll fine you. So I'm so glad to see that you're making this more general, and you're making it more freedom-friendly in that way, because that's why we all live up here. So I want to thank you for going like you're so careful, and I like the way that you're debating this, and I think it's just really wonderful. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So what would the commission like to do now? Shall we delve into the land uses? Do you want to take lunch now?
I think it'd be good to just clarify the changes. I think I know what it is, but if there are any modifications to the changes that you had based on the public comments--
That's a good idea.
Then we can--
I wanted to make a comment, a public comment, because it might affect--
Thank you. I sort of jumped ahead.
And it has to do with that sentence that we've discussed in the economic development first paragraph that begins with "market forces." It ends with "in a world economy." And I took that to mean that in a world economy, the effects of a world economy, we can do little about. And that's what the sentence really meant.
Correct.
I see Mr. Mauer shaking his head in agreement. So that the anecdotal example of the pot shops is not really what this speaks to.
But we are doing a general plan for Calaveras County.
Sure, but that's not what, this particular sentence is saying, there's a world economy that affects us in a big way, and we can't do much about that.
Right.
That's all that sentence is really saying, whether it uses too many words, do it or not, I don't know. But that's really what that sentence is saying, when it talks about governmental, county governmental control over economic forces.
That's correct. That's what my intention was there, that there are some things we can do to--
Correct.
--but it's limited.
That's right. And that's true. And so that's why it belongs there, because it recognizes that fact.
Well, I mean, if we're opening this up, I think that maybe we should add something about the county's ability to influence the economic climate of Calaveras County through--
And that's kind of what you did here, right?
Well, yeah, but that's like, more specifically.
Well, that's not general plan material. General plan material is general.
Okay. All right.
There's no end to what you could write about economic forces.
So I'd like to bring up the "more recently," the Oak Canyon Ranch. So I'm not familiar with that, but you might be and could speak to that, maybe? Or the idea was, is that, is to add "more recently," was just a change, an edit change, right?
Well, I tell you what, from my take on the comment indicated that possibly that sentence should be deleted, because it's misleading.
Well, I think what Peter would say is that, even though the person that owns it now, the rancher, may say, "I'm never, ever going to develop it as long as I own it," he could sell it tomorrow. The map still exists. So even though there's no intention, I mean, I think that's the point, it's like, I mean, I could buy it tomorrow, and like, boom, I want to get out my development agreement and start putting up--
But why is that sentence necessary? To me, it overemphasizes--
Well, because I think that's the only specific plan, other than the two other ones mentioned, so to leave it out wouldn't be complete. Right? Is that the intent there, Peter?
That was the intent, was to look at other planning processes that we've gone through, we've identified, and this is, a specific plan has very, we use the word "specific," very specific requirements under the California Code, and has standing, essentially, with the county, that we can't unilaterally change at this point.
What I heard being said wasn't that they were contesting that the project's on the books, because it does exist. I think what she was contesting, and what I took out of it, was the "more recently," and she feels like it wasn't recent, that that was way back. That was Vicki, right?
Her mind--
It was Vicki Mills.
--development is that the owner is, has no intentions to proceed with that development.
So you could just--
More recently.
--write "more recently," and just say, "A specific plan was adopted for a large development," and it should say "project," no S, in the Copropolis--
Don't we have a date for that? Wasn't it 2004?
Or you can say, "In 2004."
Just put the date in, isn't it?
Yeah. That's even better.
Because that is recent compared to most subdivisions in the '60s.
All right. So I think that covers the public comments of a specific nature, so I'll bring it back again. Would you, you guys want to have lunch? Do you want to like, yeah?
Just so I'm clear, we're changing the third paragraph on the first page, introduction, as we've discussed. We'll make those minor edits to the last sentence on page two. Land availability, we'll provide some more general discussion, and then we'll work with having, in some format, the details that you requested. And then we've done the edits to the economic development section that we've talked about and discussed, adding your paragraph in the middle, and the became rather than has become.
Right.
Those are the changes I have.
That's, I think that's a--
And so I will bring something back to you. I don't think we'll get through the whole thing today, so it's an important time, I'll bring back the changes to land availability discussion.
Okay. Does that, everyone then agrees with that?
Yes.
All right. So we'll recess until 1:00? 1:00? For recess, we'll be back at 1:00.